Internet link, though?
Lots.
Thank you. First thing anyone hears is the gavel. I sneeze this meeting in order.
Now, starting the May 4, 2023 Mount Pleasant Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Obi Daiko, can you take role?
Devaney.
Here.
Frederick.
Here.
Havelz.
Here.
Honig.
Here.
Erwin.
Here.
Kingsworthy.
Here.
Leish.
Here.
Nicholas.
Here.
Ortman. Absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the April 6, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of that April 6, 2023 work session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is zoning board of appeals report, Commissioner Friedrich.
Madam Chair, we did not meet.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications.
We did not receive any communications.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is SUP 2306 and SPR 2306.
The applicant is seeking approval for an adult-use marijuana retailer at 212 West Pickard. Stash Ventures owns five commercial buildings on the site. These buildings consist of Stash's headquarters, marijuana cultivation facility, a processing building, and storage facilities. The applicant had previously submitted a special use permit 22-15 and site plan review 22-16 to the planning commission to approve the construction of a sixth building on the property to function as the retailer establishment. While such application was approved at the September meeting in 2022, the applicant has decided to not proceed with the construction of the new building. And instead, the applicant is now seeking approval for the Timber Cannabis Retailer, which is owned by Stash, to occupy approximately 2,500 square feet of the existing building located at 212 West Pickard, where Stash's office is located. So the space used to be occupied by the Purse Salon. And since that space became vacant, the applicant decided to remodel the space to match the needs of the proposed retailer. So this is an illustrative rendering of the proposal. The applicant is also improving the building's facade, the parking lot, and the site's landscaping. They initially proposed hours of operations are from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. And those are the less than the maximum hours of operations for retailers, as you know, under the established special use permit criteria. These hours may be adjusted as needed within the hour limitations for the zoning ordinance. So the property is located within SDI Industrial Special District. Retailers are only allowed in SDI pursuant to an SUP if they are co-located with an authorized grower or processor after receiving special use approval. Since the parcels were previously merged, the retailer use is permitted in this location. State rules require each establishment to have separate entrances and exits, inventory, record-keeping, and point-of-sale operations, which the proposal seems to be complying with. The surrounding land uses are industrial and commercial in nature. And the areas around the property are mostly zoned for industrial development as well. And the uses include the wastewater treatment facility, the Michigan Consolidated Gas Company Habitat for Humanity Restore to the north and east of the site. And AJ is plumbing the postal office and MRP Properties Company to the south and west of the property. So the proposed use would occupy the south portion of this existing building that faces Pickard with the public entrance facing the parking lot. And as you can see, this is a picture showing the current conditions viewed from the driveway entrance at Pickard looking northwest. These are the current conditions viewed from the parking lot looking at their headquarters office location. And then I circled the end of the building where the retailer would be located. And as you know, I have provided more detailed analysis in our staff report. But basically, it shows that the applicant is able to comply with the general standards for SUPs. I would also note that the applicant provided a brief odor mitigation ventilation plan with speculations regarding their proposed carbon filters and a security plan which helped determine that the conditions were indeed being met. Overall, the applicant stated that it is expected that the retail operations will have a positive impact on surrounding properties as it will increase safety through its proposed security measures, which I would add that includes cameras on the corners of the building as well. And then it would also bring additional customers to surrounding business as they plan to employ approximately 10 to 15 persons. And then regarding our specific standards for special use permits for marijuana establishments, they were also mostly met except for the condition that the establishment can only operate once the state issues the final license, as you know, and that the approval would be contingent upon a successful mechanical inspection by the county. The retailer-specific conditions were also mostly met, with the exception that once the applicant submits a signed permit, the sign would state that the consumption of marijuana products is prohibited within the premises and that the applicant will ensure that no consumption of alcohol or tobacco would be allowed on the premises. And this is because they did not apply for the permit yet, and so we couldn't verify that those conditions were met. We also require that surveillance footage should be should be recorded and stored off-site for a minimum period of 14 days, which the applicant will need to comply with anyways, since the state requires a minimum 30 days. And the security plan didn't have that detail, so I'm just adding that in as well as part of the conditions. So now regarding the site plan. So I'm just showing again here the proposed site plan and then a layout of the building internally. Where you can note that there is, they're going to add an additional three, sorry, four additional trees in the front of the property and four onto the east. An evergreen hedge planted along the frontage line to screen the parking lot from the street. They're not touching the parking lot, but yet they did agree that adding the hedge there to screen would increase the compliance with the zoning code, and they're doing that. And then they're also adding a bike rack and vertical signage for ADA parking, the ADA parking spot that they have there. So ultimately, they will be increasing compliance with the zoning ordinance, which is nice. When looking at the elevations, they were submitted showing some additional new siding and then the location of the proposed band sign. The only consistency to point out here is that when looking at the elevation drawings and the existing building on site, basically, the elevation drawing is not showing the removal of windows located on the south elevation, as you can see here in the picture, circulated in red, which seems to be what the applicant is proposing. However, before this meeting, I spoke with the applicant, and they said that they're gonna double-check if they want to remove the window or keep the window. And then the idea is just that they need to resubmit the drawing so we can have that recorded in the plan. But I just wanted to note that the window removal would not create a non-compliance with zoning since this is an industrial area and we don't have minimum glazing requirements. So they can choose to remove it or keep it. All site plan requirements were met regarding the planning information, building standards, and lot occupation. No setback requirements exist here and therefore no encroachments as well. Regarding parking standards, the proposal is not changing again the parking layout. Therefore, the existing driveway is also grandfathered. The driveway there is, I believe, 35 feet in width, and we only allow up to 30, but it was built before zoning, so it can stay. And then based on the existing 11 parking spots that will be serving the establishment on this parking lot, the applicant will be required to add three bicycle parking. And they are providing four, so they are meeting that. There is also another bike rack on the north of the building that serves the Stash office when I went to do the site visit, so they are gonna be well-served with biking. And as I mentioned before, the proposed landscaping will be bringing the property into compliance with tree and screening requirements. So I think that will provide an upgraded look and feel to this area. The proposal also includes an enclosed dumpster behind the building to the north end of the property. And the applicant, as I mentioned, did not provide a sign and lighting plan as well, but they did state in the application that they will comply, obviously, with the zoning ordinance and local rules regarding that. So all that said, our staff recommendation is that the planning commission approves SUP 2306 and SPR 2306, subject to the following conditions. The applicant must obtain an adult-use marijuana state license from the state and maintain compliance with all applicable state statutes and rules at all times. The applicant shall submit an updated facade elevation drawing showing the removal of the two windows and bricks currently located on the west side of the south elevation or showing that they are keeping those windows and brick. Comply with the specific special use signage requirements and post a sign stating the consumption of marijuana products is prohibited on the premises, including the security plan that surveillance footage will be recorded and stored off-site for a minimum period of 14 days. Provide a statement ensuring that no consumption of alcohol or tobacco will be allowed on the premises. Three, the county mechanical inspector approves the building air handling system and finds it in compliance with Section 154 dot 410 dot B dot four dot paragraph B, paragraph, sub-paragraph seven. And the applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? If the applicant would like to come up?
Hey, everyone. I'm Matthew Roman. I'm counsel for Stash Ventures. Just want to say thank you so much for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I will open up public comment if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment. Seeing no one in person that wants to comment, is there anyone that's called in?
I'm gonna check. No one has called in. Let me check the email. So no one on Zoom and no emails.
Thank you. I will close public comment and open up discussion.
Move to approve SUP 2306 and SPR 2306, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant must obtain an adult-use marijuana state license from the state and maintain compliance with applicable state statutes and rules at all times. Two, the applicant shall submit an updated facade elevation drawing showing the removal of the two windows and bricks currently located on the west side of the south elevation. Comply with the specific special use signage requirements and post a sign stating the consumption of marijuana products is prohibited on the premises. Include in the security plan that surveillance footage will be recorded and stored off-site for a minimum period of 14 days. Provide a statement ensuring that no consumption of alcohol or tobacco will be allowed on the premises. Three, the county's mechanical inspector approves the building's air handling system and finds it in compliance with Section 154 dot 410 B dot four, some section B, and whatever the seven is in Roman numerals. Four, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of public works, public safety, and building safety.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I intervene just regarding the 2A condition? So can I suggest to add at the end or show that they are keeping the window and brick? Just because they haven't decided that yet.
That would work.
So you're mending your motion to that?
Yeah, would I need to restate the whole thing?
I don't think so.
Have that incorporated?
We have it on record.
That works for me. It works for everyone else.
I still second it.
I was gonna say, I'll second the amendment to the motion, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, this is your last opportunity to do so today. I don't see anyone here in person coming up to the podium. If there's anyone that called in or emailed in.
I don't see any emails. Let me check on Zoom. No participants on Zoom.
Thank you. I will close public comment. And next item on the agenda is the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan.
Good evening, planning commissioners. It's that time of year again, so I'm here to talk to you about our upcoming capital improvement plan. Basically, the goal tonight is just to provide a high-level overview of what we have planned for the next six years. Really talk about, you know, what we want our community to look like, what improvements we're planning, because really, this is the stuff that our residents and our businesses can feel, touch, interact with in the community. And it really goes a long way to providing quality of life for our residents. So the plan for tonight is to talk about what's changed since last year. We'll do a high-level overview of the details of the 2024 projects. So we're actually getting ready to work on the 2024 operating budget. So we have these projects more flushed out than some of the projects that are further out in the plan. We'll take a brief look at the later-year projects, and then we'll just sort of walk through what the next steps are for the plan. Just as a reminder, every municipality is a little bit different, but at the City of Mount Pleasant, our projects are expected to last at least 10 years if they're in this plan, and they cost at least $20,000. A couple of things. One thing that's worth pointing out is this is easily due to inflation. Some of our funding coming in lower, things like our Act 51 gas tax that we get from the state for the roads because the 2020 census are funding lowered a little bit because our population went down. So we had to really reprioritize and push some of the projects out beyond the six years. We'll talk a little bit more about the ARPA funds because we had a work session with the city commission on April 24, and so they gave staff some direction on how they want to see the ARPA dollars spent that the community received. So these are basically the sources that we look at for coming up with the plan. Staff starts with all of these in their respective areas, and then we work them into the plan. One thing, the second one from the bottom, the Paser rating, just that's, sometimes we had a question on that. That's a condition rating for any paved surface, so our roads, our parking lots, et cetera. Our engineering staff goes out and rates those on 1 to 10, with 10 being perfect condition and 1 basically being back-to-gravel essentially. In the front of the plan, we have cash flows, and that's sort of a good place if you want to see the entire plan just at a glance. It allows us to sort of cash flow everything and come up with, okay, do we need to push a project out a couple of years so we can save funds up? It also shows what's being funded by tax dollars versus what's being funded by grants or dedicated revenue that we get in. So jumping right into the projects, for 2024, for our buildings, we're going to be doing the apparatus bay floor at Public Safety. That's where they store all of the fire trucks and all of that equipment. That building is also lined with a brick wall, and we need to have that repointed and some repair work done. We're going to be replacing all of the core network switches in the city. Those are mostly from 2008, so in technology terms, it is definitely time. For downtown, we're going to be doing the alley between Michigan and University. Downtown Improvement Program, we're going to be looking at, this is our normal planners, bike racks, benches, trash cans, sort of all of the amenities that you see in downtown. For our parking lot renovations, we're going to be doing a mill and overlay on Parking Lot 1. And then our placemaking is Town Center Parking Lot 3. That's on the docket for next year. For 2024 and Economic Development, that's the first of a two-year project for traffic and pedestrian safety on MDOT. Our Community Services Director, Bill Merdeza, is working closely with MDOT on that project. For our parks, we're about to do a condition assessment. For the first one, the Chippewa River Bank Protection, we're doing a condition assessment on the dam at Mill Pond Park. And so we'll have a game plan by budget time for what we need to do out there. The $500,000 is our best guess at this point. We may need a little bit less. We may need a little bit more, but we won't know that for sure until we get the assessment from the engineer. Our medium-sized park project is the roof over the pavilion restrooms at Mill Pond. The Mid-Michigan pathway is going from Nelson Park out to Mission Creek Park. And then Union Township is paying for a section north that's connected to their, the trail system that's out in the township. Our playground equipment and universal access is adding accessibility to the play structure at Chippewa Waters. And then our parks, roads, lots, and trails are replacing fishing decks throughout the parks and coming up with a future use plan for Mission Creek Park. For Public Works, we have our annual $150,000, and this is replacing sidewalk that our engineering staff has identified as needing to be replaced because of condition or complaint locations that we get in from residents. Our storm sewer improvement for next year is upsizing the storm drains on Broadway. Out at the airport, we're going to be doing the design for the runway rehab, which is scheduled for 2025, and then we're going to be doing national construction on the taxiway. And just as a reminder, this is 95% grant-funded between the state of Michigan and the federal government, and the city puts in 5%. For our local streets, we're going to be overlaying portions of Adams, Arnold, Demming, Edgewood, Elm in May Streets. In major streets, we're going to be overlaying Brown from Broadway to Pickard, and we're also going to be redoing the bridge deck surface where Broadway goes over the Chippewa River. So basically, the bridge deck on Broadway. Out at the water plant, this page, and actually, there's a lot of projects scheduled for next year at the water plant, but sort of this whole page has a bit of an asterisk next to it because we're in the process of applying for some revolving funds from the state of Michigan. It's basically an extremely low interest rate loan with the possibility of some loan forgiveness. And so we may be moving a bunch of projects up from future years even into next year to take advantage of those funds. So out at the Water Resource Recovery Facility, we're still in the middle of our multimillion-dollar upgrade on the plant. But beyond that project, next year, we basically have all of our normal stuff that we do for our plant and our collection system, list stations, just all the stuff that we do, normal maintenance, replace pumps, et cetera, just keep the system in good condition. And so here is a look at the outside of 2024, looking at the projects that are in the out years of the plan. And these are the ones that we have planned that are more kind of ongoing, repetitive in nature. And then this is a look at the projects that are in the out years of the plan that are more one-time in nature. Worth taking a look at is the very last page of the plan is basically projects that were considered but not planned for. And typically, it's two reasons projects end up on this page. Either, one, we just couldn't afford it and we had to reprioritize, so projects get pushed outside of the six years. Or sometimes it might be a project where we have external partners or we need ease. It's just, there's something that we don't either have all of the ability to do the project or we need more information. So sometimes people are like, oh, did you consider this? Well, it's worth looking at the back of the project because there's a good chance we did consider. And like I mentioned, we did have the work session on April 24 with the city commission. They kept what had been committed for the ARPA funding. We got around $2.6 million. We're putting $750,000 into Town Center Parking Lot 3. We're putting $525,000 to get the trail from Nelson Park out to Mission Creek Park. And then we asked the city commission what they wanted to do with the rest of it, and what they've identified is they want to add $420,000 in additional amenities in Town Center for next year. And then beyond that, the $1.8 million for the GKB Trail to the South pretty much uses up the rest of the ARPA dollars. We're going to be looking for grants for Town Center. We're going to be looking for grants for the trail system. And so if we get other grant funds, the plan is then to shift any remaining ARPA dollars to parking lots 4 and 5 in 2028. We have a work session upcoming with the city commission. Just basically, any city, there's no open items left over from the April 24 work session. But we're going to have a further discussion with the city commission just to make sure they don't have any questions or need additional information. And then once that's complete, we're scheduled to have a public hearing on the capital improvement plan on May 22. The charter requires us to adopt it by the first meeting in June. And then all of the 2024 projects that I kind of went over tonight will be in the operating budget that comes before the city commission in September. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We have Stacy Toari, our city engineer, who has a lot more detail on the projects than I do, so.
I do a few quick questions. Did we ever get a hard number from the Census Bureau on our population loss?
I don't have the exact number. I know it's 21,000 something, and we were just over 26,000 in 2010, so probably 5,000.
Okay, we're talking about 6,000, so that's, okay.
Correct.
Do you know, did the city start funding Tifa again?
No.
So Tifa's done?
Correct. Other than they have some dollars set aside for some facade, there's some minimal balances left in Tifa for some things like facade improvements, fire protection, some of that sort of stuff.
You may not know this, but is the city planning on formally dissolving Tifa after 2025?
I don't believe that's been decided. That's going to go to the city commission for consideration because I believe that Tifa runs through 2025, so they'll have to make that decision before that date.
Okay. Did the wall here get fixed?
The retaining wall? No. Nope. That is...
For the summer?
That project was scheduled to be bid this year, but we got the engineer's estimate back, and it was considerably higher than what we had budgeted. So we're sort of back to the drawing board right now to see if we can value-engineer that down to a lower cost. So it'll probably be pushed out to a 2024 project.
Didn't anybody ever figure out what the cause of the subsidence was?
Of the extra costs?
No.
Oh, for the subsidence. Well, there's some poor soils. We did some soils testing out there. There's some organic materials and buried coal and other rubble in there. And also, the water table is very high. So a combination of those two things are causing the wall to settle and push away from Broadway Street.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
A couple more? You, I believe it was you last year talking about a gigantic drain, a storm drain project. Was that, has that been shelved or?
Two, there's two storm drain components. One was we're looking to do storm sewer extensions to where we can, because there's, I don't remember the number, but there are plenty of houses in Mount Pleasant that don't have a good place to discharge their sump pump. So one of the projects we were looking at adding was storm sewer extensions to give residents someplace to hook up to get rid of their stormwater. We had to delay some of that out beyond, just for funding. Like I said, we came up about $7 million short once everything was submitted, and we had to sort of cash flow everything out. And then the other one is we're still upsizing the storm drains as we're doing the street projects. But same thing, we had to delay some of the street projects, and so that pushes back some of the storm sewer. We are still doing quite a bit of storm sewer over the next six years, though.
Okay, but not that $10 million project or whatever.
Correct. It's a lower number. I'm not, if you look at the major...
Few years, it's probably gonna be, yeah.
Yep. It's got a hefty price tag that goes with it.
Last question. You might not know the answer to this. Are there special assessments proposed in this capital improvement plan?
Nothing that wouldn't be new, so I think some of the alleys would be special assessment, which for commercial is a 50-50 split. I think it's, yeah, I believe it's just the alleys for this plan.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I just had one. It was last year, there was, Canal Street Park was gonna get some stuff in it. And over the past year, there was a sign put up and some trees cut down. Was that considered? Was that considered complete, or was more going to be done?
So basically, we bid that, and it came back astronomically high last year, and so our Parks Director, Philip Discorner, is trying to figure out what we can do out there this year that fits within budget, and then we might have to do some more things out there at a later time. So I want to say, if I recall correctly, the bid came back at almost 100% more than we had estimated, so.
Okay.
It's like about anything else we're trying to bid right now. It's just, it's coming back astronomical.
With the downtown placemaking amount, I recall you mentioning something about, you know, parking lot work. What else is on the side, just parking lot work, that gets this label as placemaking?
Right, turn that, do you want to?
Yeah. So the base project that we're proposing would be to reconstruct Parking Lot 3, but we're proposing to eliminate the section of mozier between Main Street and Broadway and push together at last 10 and 3 to make one larger parking space, or parking lot, excuse me, and that makes a lot, a large event space in the corner while still preserving the parking. So we kind of have the best of both worlds of keeping the parking but creating a large event space. There'd be electrical improvements that would allow electrical receptacles and sound systems to be installed there for the stages and other events. There would be a car charging station for two vehicles, some other amenities, street lighting, benches, trying to think what else, trees. And then we have a larger project proposed, if we get the grant, that would have a few other amenities added to that, a restroom building, tables. Is there anything I'm missing that you can think of? I think those are the main things, because the restroom building would be the kind of main thing that would be grant-dependent, so.
Thank you. I do have a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
Would there be any net gain in parking on that, is it Lot 3 that you were talking about?
Yeah, with the concept, the base concept that we're proposing, we would gain seven spaces. And then if we were to get the grant, we would also add on-street parking on the west side of Main and the north side of Broadway, and that would gain us another 11 or 12 spaces on top of that.
If you shut down that little leg of mozier, isn't that going to make driving downtown a little more difficult, especially for trucks?
Yeah, I mean, they should, yeah, if they can make the turn, we'll make sure that the radius works at Main and Broadway. There will be more traffic, but with the amount of traffic we get downtown, it's more of a, a cut-through than anything.
Okay, so that, that roundabout, would that go or stay?
The roundabout would still be there, but it would be, it would serve as a T, so we would lose the west side of the T.
A three-quarter about?
Yeah. A T about, I guess.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Just one more thing to note, that I think it's a very good feature of the proposal for Town Center, is to make it curbless, so ADA accessible. So then if we want to run a very big event, it's accessible, the whole space, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, I am on the agenda is staff report.
Could we back up one, one second? We do need a recommendation, if the planning commission would consider a recommendation for the city commission on the capital improvement plan.
Sorry about that. Would anyone like to make a recommendation?
I'll recommend the capital improvement plan to the city commission.
Second.
Second, yeah, okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda is staff report.
Staff approved three site plan reviews administratively. SPR 23-07 at 105 Walnut. The owner is McGuire, and the plan was to add a shipping container to be used as an accessory storage space. The size of it is 8 by 20, and it was able to comply with the rules, so we issued the approval. The other one is SPR 23-08 at 410 Mill Street, also owned by McGuire, and it's a storage shed, 12 by 16 in size, to be used as an accessory storage space as well for that property. The third administrative review is SPR-23-09 for 310 South Bradley Street. So this is the Emanuel Village behind Emanuel Lutheran Church. The owners there, they received a grant to add a gazebo on an existing cement pad for the seniors to, to sit. So they are, they applied for that, and we also issued the approval. That's it for staff report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? If anyone would like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned.